A quorum is present. I will now call this meeting to order. An executive session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting as authorized by sections 551.001 through section 551.084 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session then such final action, final decision or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof as the board shall determine. A closed session, a closed or executive meeting of the board will now be held. The time is 5:41.
Executive session is adjourned and the board is now in open session. The time is 6:04. I will entertain motions on the items covered in executive session. Is there a motion to approve the employment of contractual personnel?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the employment of contractual personnel as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second. A motion was made by Wanda and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carried six to zero with zero abstentions. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM of a regular meeting. The Board of Trustees of Galena Park Independent School District is now convened in a regular meeting on Monday, September 11th of 2023 in the Administration Building of Galena Park Independent School District, the address of which is 14705 Wood Forest Boulevard, Houston, Texas, 77015. The time is 6:05 PM. I want to welcome the members of our audience to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Galena Park ISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters of duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Galena Park Independent School District. We have no public comments for posted agenda items today. We do have a public comments for non-agenda items today. Patrons who have duly registered per policy BED local may address the board regarding matters of concern or interest to the district other than character of any student, staff, or board member. I would like to remind the audience that the comments of the speakers reflect their own positions and opinions. The board may not discuss or act upon any matter that is not listed under the action item portion of the agenda. Therefore, board members may not discuss the comments of speakers. Please understand that a lack of response from board members does not indicate agreement or approval of the comments. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board. The secretary of the board will be designated timekeeper. Ms. Maritza Cortez, will you please step up to the podium? Ms. Cortez? She's not here. Ms. Cortez is not present, therefore we will continue. Ms. Sharonda Hunter, will you please step up to the podium?
Good evening. Mrs. Stevens, on behalf of Dr. Moore, the Board of Trustees, and the Galena Park Independent School District School Community, we would like to present you with a gavel in recognition of your service as board president for the 2022-2023 school year. We are so appreciative of your support and all you do for the Galena Park ISD schools. Thank you.
Tonight's invocation will be presented by myself, Norma Hernandez, and the pledges of American and Texas flags will be led by the North Shore Middle School Army, LOTC. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flags. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather today to make decisions for our district, we are reminded of the terrible attack of 9/11 on our country 22 years ago. We thank you for blessing those with bravery and sacrifice as they saved lives, comfort and strengthen the families and friends of those who needlessly passed away. We ask never forget. Dear God, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion as we grow closer as a group and nature the bonds of our administration, faculty, staff, students, and community. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Color, let's see, jump. Get a re, color. Forward, march. Left, left, left. March on, march. Left, left, left. Colors, hold. Left, face. Present, colors.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Order, colors. Outward, face. Outward, face. Forward, march. Left, 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 left. Colors, hold. Hold, colors. Present, arms. Order, arms. Forward, march. Left, left.
You may be seated. We will now move on to this evening's special recognition portion of the agenda. Dr. Moore?
First of all, Ms. Linda Jamel is here from Anna Hernandez's office. I saw her taking pictures earlier. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Be sure to give our best to representative. And once again tonight, we appreciate you coming and sharing a little time with us. I know everybody's really busy. It's very difficult to have time to take away from your families to come out here. So, thank you so much for having an interest in what goes on in our community with our children, and we really appreciate everybody's support. So, thanks again for coming and we'll get on with the show and try to get you out of here, maybe before it gets too dark outside.
Good evening. Board Secretary Ramon Garza will assist with tonight's recognitions. We would like to begin the evening's recognitions by adding our media partners to the Texas Association of School Boards Media Honor Roll. The Honor Roll recognizes media representatives for fair and balanced reporting of news about public schools. First is Kathy Hernandez. Mrs. Hernandez, please join us on stage. Mrs. Hernandez is an anchor and reporter for KPRC Channel 2. Born and raised in Houston, Kathy Hernandez is a proud graduate of Galena Park High School. Mrs. Hernandez is proud to be a reporter who makes a difference in the community to help those in need and to show the good in humanity. Congratulations, Mrs. Hernandez. Family, please join on stage. Family, family. Congratulations, Mrs. Hernandez. Our final addition to the Honor Roll for 2023 is Mr. Alan Jamel. Mr. Jamel, please join us on stage. Thank you, Mr. Jamel, for all that you do when it comes to sharing the great news in Galena Park ISD. We truly appreciate your support. And his family is on stage. Congratulations, Mr. Jamel. Next, we would like to recognize the Fine Arts Department represented by Mr. Sam Harris and Mr. Mickey Weinerger. Thank you for your department's work toward Galena Park ISD being named a Texas Art Education Association District of Distinction for the 2022-2023 academic year. GPISD is proud of your outstanding leadership in promoting the arts in our district and our community. Finally, we will recognize Ms. Abigail Guerrero, a North Shore Senior High School sophomore for the dedication of her mural titled "Free of Judgment." Would Abigail's administrators please join her on stage? Expediently. Thank you. Abigail's 16-foot-by-23-foot mural honors Harris County Judge Lena Hidalgo. Abigail completed the mural over the course of 40 hours between February and May of 2023. GPISD is proud to support and empower young minds like Abigail. Congratulations. This concludes the recognition portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you. Any board member may make a comment during this portion of the agenda without prior posting being required. Comment items may not pertain to the character of any student, staff, or board member and may not be discussed or deliberated upon at this time. Does anyone have a comment?
I just want to thank the district for giving me this honor. It was actually an honor to just serve as president last year to the community as well as the district, the teachers, the students, the staff, and administrators. So, thank you. What an honor.
I would also like to make a comment. Thank you to everyone. The start of the school year was a great, great beginning. I know that I visited about four schools, and every time that I entered, there was a constable or a resource officer there. It felt really, really safe. I was proud of our, our schools. I mean, as soon as you walk in, you felt safe. As we went in, of course, we had the teachers teaching, the students were engaged, we had smiles everywhere, and as we took pictures, they just loved it. They just shined. Anyway, thank you for those who helped in the start of our school.
I'd like to make a quick comment. I want to recognize everyone involved in the fine arts programs from preschool all the way to graduation and beyond. I'm a product of the fine arts of my school, and if it wasn't for music, marching band, I probably wouldn't have stayed in school myself. So my hats go, my hat, I thank everyone who's involved in education, especially in the fine arts. So congratulations to y'all.
I'd just like to add that if you haven't gone to a football game yet this year, well, if you know, Galena Park's 2-1 and North Shore's 3-0, so it's exciting. You know, the band is doing awesome, all the drill team, and Jacketeers, the Scarlets. So if you haven't gone to a game, it's a nice entertainment for a Friday night and some Thursday nights. So we hope to see y'all at the games.
We now come to the business portion of tonight's meeting. We invite and encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you need to leave early, we understand, and this is a convenient time to do so. We appreciate your attendance. Please come again. Harold Sonny Fletcher III, Senior Director for Facilities Planning and Construction, will provide a 2016 bond program construction update.
Am I live? I'm live. Good evening, Ms. Hernandez, Board, Dr. Moore, and Cabinet. Real quick, get through some construction update. Pyburn Elementary School, the Phase 2, is what you see pictures of. Picture on the left, great to see ductwork and all the other piping going in. Picture on the right, you can see some risers for the plumbing system going in. See how that's gonna have a nice, wonderful entryway there? And of course, got some walls going in. Things going along nicely at Pyburn. Galena Park High School, Phase 2. Picture on the left is the service yard, so you see the service yard concrete is poured and the wall sheathing is what that's called, the green board there is what's going in. So very happy with our project progress. They're likely to be a little further along. Usually get a question about schedule, and I'd like that to be a little further along, so we're monitoring that very closely. Had some issues with center point getting electricity there, that's probably my biggest worry on that one. We're working through that challenge, reminding them every week how important it is to get electricity, of course. And then, this was a different picture. I always want to show you something interesting on our HVAC, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning projects. All the green means everything's an acceptable temperature. The one room there that's in red, of course, is a storage room, and then we have some restrooms. So super happy our HVAC ESER-funded project went really well. And then, didn't have a green picture for other reasons, so we have took a thermometer and took some pictures. We've got classroom temperatures 71, 72 degrees at Purple Sage, so really happy with how that project's gone. And then, not to be outdone, MacArthur, of course, where we did heating, ventilation, and air conditioning work, those temperatures very good there. On our ESER projects that we did this summer, you saw those slides. We also replaced boilers at North Shore Middle School, Woodland Acres Middle School, Building B. The roof was replaced, and we did the water line that serves both Cunningham and Tyce to replace that water line. All those are substantially complete, and it'll be finally complete here in the next week. Doing a lot to get those closed out very quickly. That was it for me. Thank you, and of course, what questions might you have?
Well, you didn't give us an update on Galena Park High School. How are we doing?
Galena Park High School's going well. I would rather it was a little further along. We have a plan to get some temporary air conditioning. We did an intertie of the two air conditioning systems, so we're gonna utilize that. You know, I always talk about chiller deliveries. I think I've talked about that some, a couple times. That's a challenge, but we're gonna, as we get into the cooler months, right? Hopefully, we get cooler months. The weatherman says it happens every year, right?
There's gonna be a freeze now.
As we get into cooler months, we'll be able to use the chillers at the existing building to cool the building. So I'd be happier if it was a little further along, but still going along nicely.
How we doing with all the utility problems we're having with the city?
Um, city utility problems have been okay. They've been a great.
The water, we had that water issue.
That was quite a challenge. Didn't affect construction, luckily. They were able to make adjustments, so that was good. But having that interconnected, the two air conditioning systems, I'm hoping the contractor plans to use that to get us conditioned a little quicker, so we're not gonna be tied to a chiller delivery date. Does that make sense? So we're gonna, once, we don't need all the cooling capacity in existing facility.
That's what we're talking, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Sonny.
Thank you.
Sonny, this is Mr. Fletcher, I'm sorry.
That's quite.
I just want to say I've been around a long time, and I want to say thank you to you and your crew for the outstanding job you're doing. I feel so good about all the facilities in Galena Park ISD, and I just want to publicly thank you.
Thank you so much. That was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. We will now move on to new business. Is there a motion to approve the renewal proposal from Texas Political Subdivision's Joint Self Insurance Fund to provide workers' compensation insurance for the coverage term of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th of 2024 for an annual premium cost of
I, Jose Jimenez, move we approve the renewal proposal from Texas Political Subdivision's Joint Self Insurance Fund to provide workers' comp insurance as presented.
I, Linda Sherrod, make a motion for second.
A motion was made by Jose Jimenez and seconded by Linda Sherrod. All in favor? The motion was carried five to zero with one abstention. With respect to the Galena, to the general consent agenda, do we have, do we want to remove any items for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Adrian Stevens, move we approve the general consent agenda as presented.
I, Ramon Garza, second the motion.
A motion was made by Adrian Stevens and seconded by Ramon Garza. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the construction consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Linda Sherrod, move we approve the construction consent agenda as presented.
I, Jose Jimenez, second that motion.
A motion was made by Linda Sherrod and seconded by Jose Jimenez. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with no abstentions. With respect to the financial consent agenda, do we want to remove any item for a separate vote or take the agenda as is?
I, Wanda Johnson, move we approve the financial consent agenda as presented.
I, Adrian Stevens, second.
A motion was made by Wanda Johnson and seconded by Adrian Stevens. All in favor? The motion carried six to zero with no abstentions. The following documents were presented to the board for information. Dr. Sonia Neise, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy Superintendent for Operational Support, presented number one, tax collection report for July 2023, and number two, 2016 Bond Program Financial Report as of July 31st of 2023. Ms. Elizabeth Layler, Deputy Superintendent for Educational Support and School Administration, presented 2022-23 Early Head Start Program Information Report. Number two, Early Head Start Policy Council Meeting Minutes for June of 2023, Early Head Start Update and Fund 20205 Expenditure Report Summary for June of 2023. And number four, Early Head Start Update and Fund 205 Expenditure Report Summary for July of 2023. There being no other business before the board at this time, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 6:31.